Good evening. It is Monday, November 16th, 2020, 6:30 PM. This is the Carney Board of Alderman Meeting. Call the meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Shirley, have you had a chance to take role?
I have taken role. Everybody is present, and you have a quorum.
Thank you. Boards, you'll see in front of you the consent agenda. Are there any questions or any discussion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I have a question on item C3. I think it's a wonderful idea going to voice over IP. I wondered if there's any provisions made for if the Internet is down.
We will have some pots lines, planal service telephone lines, Mr. Mayor. We're going to keep them for the fax machines and sump pump. And so if we actually lost the Internet, we don't have complete phone service, but we'd have an emergency access. So we do have, at the police station, we have a generator. And generally, the power outages are problems, as much as losing the Internet. But you point out a weakness to the VoIP system.
Well, and I will say again that I'm in favor of sweetness. I just wondered what kind of system, especially with the police, that we were going to have in place if there was an issue, so.
We have our cell phones and we'll have the planal, well, they call it pots, planal telephone service that they could get access to. But as far as, you know, if there's a long duration, that's an experience. I'm not sure I know how others have been dealing with that. So it'd be a...
Do our constituents have a way to phone through the city if this goes down? Will it connect to Jim's cellphone, or how do we handle that?
So if the Internet's down, the phone server will not work. So it would be imperative to have interruption continuity plans to make sure that in the event that the Internet is down for an extended period of time, that, you know, there's still an active phone line in and active phone line out for both the police station and City Hall. I'm sure, though, that our vendor here, you know, would be the first time they've been asked that question and has a good resolution for that.
Do you want to table it?
To separate C1 and 2 from C3, and I make a motion to approve C1 and C2.
I second.
All right, we have a motion to separate C1, 2, and 3 by Alderman Holt to pass C1 and C2. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the resolution after resolution is read for approval on C3. Because it's a resolution.
Want me to read by title?
Read by title only, first reading.
Resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign a three-year lease contract with Mitel for phone equipment and VoIP services for City Hall and the police station.
I make a motion to approve on first reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
The only requires one reading, so thank you very much. I will report back to you. I'll get an answer for that. Thank you.
We'll move to Mayor's remarks this evening. The first thing I want to discuss is we have Kurt Hamilton, the Carney Enrichment Council Executive Director, to provide a presentation of the donation to the Splash Pad project to recognize the gracious donors and kick off with additional fundraising for the Splash Pad. Kurt will make a presentation to the city in the amount of $44,535.57 raised for the Splash Pad. We thank all those who have helped in the fundraising and recognize those businesses and individuals who have contributed that substantial amount of money to the project. Kurt, I won't steal any more of your thunder, and I'll be happy to give you the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board, for having me tonight. I'm also joined by my board president of the KEC, Jason Hoyt, along with some of my sponsors as well. I have Jim Eldridge, a part of my board as well. But Debbie Holt, I see you representing the Rotary Club, but also individually, and some others as well. But we are very excited about this project. It was a wonderful thing to see the playground equipment actually get torn up today for the Splash Pad and get ready to get moved over to Mack Porter Park. So we had a lot of wonderful people that actually made this happen, and I just wanted to take a moment just to thank just some of those people that donated kind of a significant amount to this project. So we have Will and Marissa Bryson, La Fuente, Carney Rotary Club, Clay County Savings Bank, Farmers Insurance with Dan Lutner, Carney Lions Club, Shelter Insurance with Sherry Galipsi, Precision Parapactic, State Farm Stella Spiking, TDR Auto Plaza, Cheepo Depot, and Edward Jones with Jason Thier. And, I mean, those are just a few of the people. There's a lot more people that made smaller contributions as well, but every dollar was, you know, added up. And we were very excited to see, you know, our small contribution go towards what the city is willing to rely on for our town. We think that this is going to be huge for our downtown, and we're just really looking forward to see the project get on its way and see it come out in the end, so we appreciate all the support.
Thanks, Kurt. To the contributors, I do say thank you for your fundraising efforts, sustained the Splash Pad effort, and really inspired the city of Carney ourselves to seek out additional grant funding. It also helped give the city confidence to appropriate additional financial support to make the Lions Park Splash Pad a reality. The city greatly appreciates your financial support of the project. It simply would not have been happened, it would not have been possible without all the financial commitments and leadership. So on behalf of the city of Carney, our citizens, I do say thank you all for your generous donations. And Kurt, I think there does remain an opportunity to raise additional funds items that were not able to be funded with our current contract. So I think you guys are going to continue those efforts. And I do appreciate Kurt, you working with Steve Casey and our Parks Department and Larry Reynolds to identify those needs and to work on those goals. So once again, thank you and your committee and all the donors.
You.
Next item under Mayor's remarks is I want to discuss a couple of CARES Act funding resolutions. Enclosed our resolutions authorizing payments to, because we didn't receive great bids for the HVAC improvements, we have an additional unobligated funds, and I recommend that we commit $20,000 to the Carney Enrichment Council to aid them in purchasing a bus to assist seniors and youth in accessing programs. We have discussed this with Tina Orage at Clay County Senior Services, who has also issued a grant of $20,000 to the Carney Enrichment Council for the purpose of acquiring a bus. We believe that because Carney has no public transportation, CARES Act funding is appropriate to assist in safely transporting citizens on necessary trips. Another resolution authorizing reimbursement of city expenses for the COVID-19 pandemic in the amount of $14,907, and a resolution authorizing expenditures of $38,324 to replace the HVAC systems in City Hall, as well as install air scrubber technology that kill viruses and bacteria at both the City Hall and Police Station. Our existing HVAC system at City Hall does not include antibacterial materials in construction to minimize air quality threats, including viruses and bacteria, and indeed to be replaced. Our goal here is to mitigate the spread of novel coronavirus and other air quality threats through the City Hall and Police Department HVAC systems. The low bid is from Pence Plumbing and Electric Care in Carney. I request board approval of these resolutions relative to CARES Act funding. We have also identified additional needs within the police department to outfit our cars with laptops so we can be less dependent on using our police station and in reserving the balance of $10,269 until we get better figures for that purpose. I believe the city has done a great job sharing with our intergovernmental partners and addressing needs arising from the COVID-19 pandemic, and I believe our use of the CARES Act funds is quite similar to our Clay County neighboring cities, as summarized included. So if we could read the first resolution by title only, Mr. Administrator?
The resolution recognizing the need for a transportation bus for the Carney Enrichment Council to assist transportation needs of the seniors and youth during the COVID pandemic, and is hereby determined a necessary expense eligible for $20,000 of CARES Act funding.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Second resolution?
By title only, please.
A resolution authorizing $14,907 in CARES Act funds to be authorized to reimburse the city of Carney, and city expenses are hereby determined as a necessary expense relative to the COVID-19 pandemic.
I make a motion to pass the resolution as presented.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Read the final resolution by title only, please.
Resolution authorizing the city administrator sign an agreement with Pence Plumbing and Electric for HVAC improvements at City Hall and Police Station. City equipment is hereby determined a necessary expense eligible for $38,324 of CARES Act funding.
Still moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Board, I want to begin to appreciate your support, and I know as we've gone through all this CARES Act money that was going to disappear next month, we did not get deployed to our community. Not to speak on behalf of any of our partners that we assisted, I am proud for the fact that every penny was kept and put to good, logical, and legal use in our community. And Kurt, congratulations to you and the rest of KEC. We appreciate all you guys do in our community, and I know you'll get good use out of this van, or whatever vehicle you decide to get.
Thank you very much, yeah. Well, we really appreciate it. And this was a five-year dream, and it became a five-month dream very quickly. So we're very excited to bring this to Carney.
We'll move on next. The next item I want to discuss in the Mayor's remarks is I do want to commend our three employees enrolled in the Missouri Rural Water Association's apprenticeship program. We, you know, a couple of our employees, Glenda Sykes, Jesse Gambino, and Jeff Putnam, have made some media that's gone out to all the municipalities. So we've got some recognition there, as well as, most recently today, they were actually in a little commercial for this program. But I also don't want to forget and also recognize our Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Donnie Smith, for taking on the Clay County Economic Development Council's Donovan Leadership Program taught at the William Joel College. I welcome their extra efforts in taking classroom instruction while keeping up with their full-time duties. I personally know that challenge. Because I've done that several years, I've got one year left on my program. So anyway, the benefits of education will always pay off for our citizens and pay dividends long-term, and we thank you for that. With that, Donnie, I'd like to welcome you to provide an update to the board on that program and hear about your leadership program as well.
I'll make it short and sweet, Jim. I don't know if you can bring up some of the stuff that we sent out, if that'll work with our impromptu basement deal?
I think I can.
Okay. Anyway, the Missouri Rural Water guys have completed seven of their classes, which are 14 days worth. They have also...
Might have to turn that down. Let me see. Okay, go ahead. I'll turn the volume on when you take over.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Anyway, they've completed... She's still working on... They've completed testing for their distribution, for their water distribution license. Don't have results yet. Hopefully, all three of them pass. They're getting ready to take their... Oh dang it, it just left my head. If David was here, he'd tell me. They're OSHA 10. That's next on the agenda, so they can get certified for OSHA 10. And it's going well. They all seem to be thriving. They ask questions. They're learning. You can tell that it's really beneficial to them because they come to the water treatment plant and they start putting it all together, if you know what I mean. Everything starts clicking. Anyway, Jim, if you're ready, I'm ready.
Okay. I was ready, and...
Donnie, I appreciate the fact that you and Jim brought this opportunity to the board, and I think it's great that we provided that opportunity to our staff. And I love to hear that you're seeing already instant results, that they're coming back and instantly putting that knowledge to work for the city. That's what we ask for.
I think time and money spent towards furthering education for anyone within the city realm is money and time well spent.
Learn in your job now.
Okay, this is Jesse Gambino.
Things that you may not have learned in your job now.
I say definitely. It gives you more of a wide spectrum of what jobs are actually in the field. It's not just going in and doing the tests or doing your daily stuff that you have to do. You learn a lot more than... There is a place to expand in this business, and it's not just one particular thing. You learn stuff that you might never learn if you just did the same job day in and day out.
What you're doing right now with your job in the distribution, is it helping you out thus far with what you're doing currently?
Yeah, it's helped a lot. Basically, like I've learned from like the GoTo临门 method of like, here's how you do it, but not the why of what I'm doing. So like, I know how to do these things, but I don't really know the complexities of why. So I think it's helped me because I gained a lot of knowledge just being able to, you know, know the process in which things are done and why they're done that way, so that if there is a mistake that gets made, I can add a backtrack and figure out where I went wrong.
How has this class changed your perspective of the career field in general?
I didn't know there was so many... And they're really... It's like, you don't think about each month at where your water's coming from every day, or, you know, what it takes to actually drink water. I enjoy my distribution, and I enjoy letting my daughter know that. Or my husband or just talking about, like, you know, this is what this is, this is what this is. It's kind of neat to know that. So I appreciate everything that you have learned and being able to let other people know what actually goes into it or where it comes from.
And what brought you into the field.
Great. Anyway.
You a professor in Wexford? I created one for our startup using Wix. Let me show you how.
Kind of a commercial for Missouri Rural Water, but we're okay with that because they used two out of the three people we've sent. And I know their class is full because I've seen, you know, pictures of the class, so.
I think I blew it up.
But it's pretty impressive. I mean, just like Glenda says, you know, before you get into water, you turn it on in your house, and you don't know where it comes from. You don't know how it gets there. You don't know what it takes to make it drinkable. And, you know, through these classes, they've learned all that, you know, what it really takes to make pond water to where you can actually drink it and sustain life on it. Anyway, I thought that was pretty interesting with Missouri Rural Water doing a little commercial for Carney, if you will. And on mine, just a quick little update, I'm cohort 28, which I don't know where I put that with the mayor with his deal. But at first, I felt very overwhelmed and undereducated because my entire class has doctors and master degree people in it. And I'm like high school plumbing guy over here. They're using big $5 college words, and I'm going, okay, I'm not sure what that means. Anyway, I'm halfway through, and I feel totally comfortable with my background. I'm actually right in the groove with the rest of them. So even though I'm undereducated, if you will, I feel like I contribute pretty well, and I'm learning quite a bit. I was really impressed with the program. I was... Uh-oh, we have issues.
Yeah, we have an issue.
Anyway, it's been very enlightening to me and the book reports that we've... I haven't done one of them since junior high, but I've done two of them now, so I'm doing okay with that. But it is really enlightening when you get a vast group together and see that you struggle with the same things through people and how to handle situations. It's just been really educational.
Our continued support to your staffers that are working so hard on that certification. Next, I have two other items I want to discuss that didn't make my agenda here. One is I have been contacted by a local veteran about the way that we display our flags down 33 Highway. I know this has been an item that we've discussed before. At this point, let me pull this up here. I sent Jim an email. But I do think that, you know, I've had several discussions with this gentleman. Like I said, he's like Dan, a veteran, and I do agree with him. If we're going to fly a flag, it needs to be flown openly and freely, not, you know, in trees or hidden. So I did ask Donnie and Jim and David Pavlich to look into some ideas to moving our flagpole holders out to where they're facing outward instead of inward. I know that they're currently faced inward because of MODOT.
That's correct.
And Jim or Donnie, did you guys have a chance to look into any of that or get any updates? Has anything changed there? This gentleman's recommendation, which I tend to agree with, is if we can't fly a flag properly, openly and freely, then we probably shouldn't be flying it at all.
Jim and David didn't address it earlier today. Turn them around and raise them up. We can only raise them six inches. And I think we figured out that it was only going to be like right at 13.6, and that's a bare minimum MODOT. And the flag actually hangs down below 13.6. So the concern is that big trucks, whatever, are going to grab the... That is if we can get MODOT approved, if we can. Jim, late this afternoon, dropped me an idea of maybe downsizing the flags a little, getting a smaller flag to help the height. I'm just not sure we have an answer. Unless Jim has come up with a better idea right now, I'm... We're still working on it.
What's thoughts on maybe instead of a flag inward against the trees and stuff, if we're usually doing holiday banners, if we would just do like an American flag on a holiday banner?
That was discussed also.
I think that's probably the best option because we have addressed this before, and the people like to see the flag, even if some of them do get kind of caught up in trees or are not as visible as we wish they were. So that is one method to address it that would solve it.
To get the... What we've came up with, to get the banner or the flags hanging out over the roadway, the only options are to move light poles, which is very, very costly, land acquisitions, all kinds of... I don't know. We are totally wide open for suggestions because everything we kind of came up with, we hit it all except for maybe the flag banner idea. That's still not having an open flag free flowing. This is a problem that we, probably 12 years ago, we were dealing with the exact same thing of how to get the flags to flow on 33. So like I said, this is not new. We have looked at this before, and we didn't come up with a good solution then. There's... The real problem is that the lights are on the wrong side of the sidewalk to do what we need them to do. With them hanging over, MODOT considers that an interference with the roadway, which I totally get that. And if we... They are hung there. There is a possibility of a vehicle snagging them and then not only stripping the flag, but could pull down the whole light pole, which is a lot more dangerous. There's also a legal aspect to that, that if we put the flag in the way and the trucker hits it and tears it up, he has the right to his roadway. So therefore, now that becomes our liability, not MODOT's, if damage is done or wreck is caused because we impeded that traffic of that vehicle. So this has been a problem that I don't know there's a really good answer to. As a veteran, I would say that, say for me, now I disagree with this gentleman just a little bit. Would I like free-flowing flags? Absolutely. But the fact that we have them and we can see them, and maybe not each one of them are perfect like we need them to be, I think it still shows our patriotic love for our country. It makes me proud as a veteran to see them. Do I wish there could be a better way? Absolutely. That's why I pushed for a flagpole up at Clay. I love to see the flags free flowing. However, with the design of 33, I just don't see that we got a way to really do that.
Yeah, so my comment to all that is I certainly understand minimum height restrictions by MODOT. That's why I asked to check into heights. I'm not recommending more, obviously, that we would put something out that would interfere with their 13.6 or 14.3 minimum height restriction. The gentleman, his name is Michael Stipes, 27-year resident of Carney and veteran. Just a concern that he's passed along, so.
Oh, I would love to be in the same boat. It's just that the poles are just...
Yeah, they're what they are.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand.
We are in a unique position that not all of our Carney streets are ours to do with as we will. We do have 92 and 33 that are, you know, highways, and we are under different rules.
Yeah, and I did make him aware of the previous conversations on MODOT, and that's when, you know, the response was, well, maybe we shouldn't hang them at all and look at other options, so. Something to consider. Donnie, I appreciate you and staff looking into other options, and I think we can follow up on some other ideas.
We'll do that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
We will definitely do that.
Last item I want to discuss is, I'm sure everybody noticed, the city of Kansas City made, and some neighboring counties made a change to their public health order. I watched that myself, and there were some comments in there that made me concerned, quite frankly, that there's going to be some changes to the Clay County Public Health Order. I'm not here this evening to speak on behalf of Mr. Zabrak or his board or his health director, but I did reach out to him and asked him, you know, if, regarding the KC MO updated order in some of the surrounding counties, and then the mention by Mayor Lucas and Rex Arthur that they're... that they were in contact with other elected officials in the area, I passed them to see what Clay County was thinking, if anything. And since at that point, I'd not had opportunity to share the thoughts, my thoughts as Mayor Kearney or the board's thoughts on behalf of Brian, any feedback. He responded a little later and mentioned that they are in discussion. And then he did send out an email a couple minutes after that, seeking some input from all the mayors in Clay County for that. So I would just encourage the residents to continue to contact your elected officials. It seems like the feedback that I receive on this is you're either 100% for it or 100% against it. So I've received phone calls and calls today, you know, hey, what are you going to do for Kearney? And so just continue to remind people this is a Clay County order. You know, they are by ordinance. Gary is our public health director as well. And I plan on sharing the feedback I received from residents so far with Gary this evening in an email and encourage anybody else that would have any input to share that with me or your elected aldermen and your wards. And we'll pass that information on. That concludes my mayor's report. We'll move on to the administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we will continue to reopen that flag issue. We're looking at some smaller flags that with shorter poles that might, that might be an option. But we'll look at that for you, Mr. Mayor. I want to welcome Megan Miller of Gilmore and Bell and Todd Goffey of Piper Sandler, who've joined us by Zoom. Megan and Todd will answer any questions the board has concerning the enclosed proposed ordinance establishing a lease purchase financing agreement between the city of Kearney and the Kearney Trust Company. And it's enclosed in 4A. And Todd or Megan?
Yeah, sorry, Todd. So what you have in front of you tonight is an ordinance approving the lease. This is your standard lease, leaseback with the Kearney Trust Company. It's just over $1 million. It's a $1.1 million lease. The funds will be available in a bank account in the city's name at closing. And this will be an annual appropriation. This is not a general obligation of the city, very similar to the cop steals that we've done. It will be up to you guys every year to annual appropriate the funds to pay that back.
And Todd has shown us how to do that by, we've got it layered into our existing leases. So when our, some of our earlier leases expire, the amortization, you know, the principal amount goes, goes up later on in later years. So Todd, you got anything to say?
I don't think so, Jim, not tonight. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay.
Any questions or discussion from the board on this item? Todd, I believe there was an area that you mentioned, you discussed with Mr. Middleton that, and I'm sorry, the other bank from the Republic area offered that Kearney Trust said, yeah, we may if we're required. Was there any room for negotiation there? Or did it appear so for the document?
Yeah, really, the discussion with Mr. Middleton was more of a clarification of their response of what they provided. And we, it wasn't clear on their day count method for interest. And so we clarified that. We'd also clarified the redemption provision. And then I think the third and final item was the, the concept of the drawdown structure, which one of the other banks had indicated. But our, our thought and recommendation was, was not to do that and just to proceed forward as, as it was presented.
That's where we ended on it. Thank you for the clarification. There's no questions or discussion from the board? Consider the proposed ordinance, Jim, if you could read it by Todd only?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance authorizing lease financing of improvements to Lyons Memorial Park for the city of Kearney, Missouri, and approving certain documents and actions related to the financing.
Make a motion for first reading?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Second reading by Todd only?
An ordinance authorizing the lease purchase financing of improvements to Lyons Memorial Park for the city of Kearney, Missouri, and approving certain documents and actions related to the financing.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose?
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, my second item of business is I want to report on that we've, we have went ahead and, and used our authority that was given to us earlier this year to sign a contract with Rezot, Revise pursuant to Resolution 6-2020. A contract has been negotiated and executed with the revise for the city's website. This project has been delayed due to the forecasted revenue drops due to the COVID pandemic, which we've not yet realized. Rez has offered better terms to the city as an incentive to proceed that we don't want to pass up. The price has been reduced from $27,700 to $19,700. The scope stays exactly the same as previously requested. However, Revise removed the onsite kickoff and the onsite training due to the possible COVID restrictions. So we'll do that with Zoom and learn how to do that well. Revise is going to include the first year of hosting, which is also, and tech support, which is free, which was, was not previously included. And Revise is going to reduce the annual costs from $5,900 to $3,400 after year one. And Revise will still include a free redesign in year four. And I want to mention that our technical support staff here, Ryan Marcot, has, who is also our assistant park director, has volunteered to lead the website design. So we're very appreciative that you stepping forward to do that, Ryan. We will support you in all your efforts and give you contributing ideas, media content, and pictures and graphics because you're going to need us to support that. And so thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, I, when I got this update, I asked Jim, be sure to share with the board. I know Alderman Barker and so many staff and Pat Alderman, Marie Steiner, spent a lot of time working on this. I think this is an important first step of branding and updating social media as well. So very good update, Jim. I appreciate you sharing all that and I appreciate everybody that's had a part of it as possible.
I didn't mention, but it's, the bill for 75% of the, of the first, of the first payment is on the tonight's bills. And the contract was reviewed by our city attorney and, and he had several comments. And they, they quite graciously made all of the, the contract changes, especially if litigation were to occur. It'll be right here in Clay County rather than the state of Michigan. So that's a good thing.
Great, thank you. We'll move to public requests and petitions.
Mr. Mayor, Mark Riles is proposing to combine two adjacent lots in one track for commercial development. At their November the 9th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted four to zero to recommend approval of the, of the proposed final plat of West Ridge Business Center, second replat. The minutes of those meetings, of that meeting is enclosed and also enclosed in 5A is a proposed ordinance approving the final plat as recommended. And David Pavlich is online and we have our P&amp;Z liaison, Kathy Barker, who may want to have comments.
I'd also like to point out applicant Eric Riles is on the line too. At least I thought he was. I think we may have lost him for Mark Riles.
David, I'm here, David.
There you, okay, there you are. All right. Sorry, I saw, I saw a name that said Eric and I knew that your phone may have been registered under that name. So.
Yeah, it, it lost and I had to call back in.
Yeah. This is a, if the board may remember, this is continuation of the previous month. The P&amp;Z and the board approved a vacation of utility easement through the middle of the property. So this is that second portion of this project to combine the lots into one for future development. Again, planning zoning recommended approval unanimously of the final plat replat.
Alderman Barker, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion from the board? Mr. Administrator, if you can read the proposed ordinance by Todd only, please?
An ordinance approving the final plat of West Ridge Business Center, second replat, a subdivision in Kearney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way annisements thereon.
I make a motion to approve as read.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Second reading by Todd only, please?
An ordinance approving the final plat of West Ridge Business Center, second replat, a subdivision in Kearney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way annisements thereon.
Make a motion to approve on second read?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Riles, congratulations and look forward to some improvements on the ground.
Yeah, thank, thank you all. I appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
You too.
We'll move on to public hearings. Do you have a public hearing scheduled this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, public hearing has been scheduled to consider a request from Christine Hughkink, if I hope I said that right, Christine.
You did great.
Of KED Management, rezone 102 East Main Street from C Commercial to R-P-1 Planned Single Family Dwelling District. At their November the 9th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a similar hearing at which they voted unanimously four to zero to recommend approval of the request. Those minutes are enclosed. After a public hearing, it is recommended the board consider the enclosed proposed ordinance approving the rezoning. And we have the applicant here. We also have David Pavlich, who may want to report, and Kathy Barker, our P&amp;Z liaison, may want to say something also.
Do we have anything from staff?
Yeah, I can add. The reason for the P district overlay is because the lot, which has existed for 100 years in the state that it is in today, is smaller than our standard zoning, our one zoning classification is today. So the P overlay was to allow that existing lot to be rezoned to residential for a single-family dwelling. There used to be a single-family dwelling on that property up until 1997. There are family dwellings along that side of the block as well. Construction of a house to fit in, in, into the neighborhood.
Alderman Barker, do you have anything to add?
Actually, a couple of things. One, she also at our meeting provided a potential house plan for this to see what it was going to look like. It was very well done and I think it's, it's a very buildable plan. Secondly, you know, I love, I love commercial properties. I love it. But I think in this particular instance, I think that this is just more, more suited towards the residential. If you look at the blocks, the majority of that block is residential. And so I think in this instance, I think this is the appropriate use for that lot.
I value, I value your feedback there. I appreciate that. Ms. Hadnick, I hope I said that correctly. Ms. Christine, do you have anything to add to that?
Thank you so much. I'm really excited to be a part of the Kearney community. And if you would like, if the rest of the group there would like to see the, the blueprints of this home, Dave does have the blueprints. He's available to share online if that's something that you'd be interested in.
Yeah, I would like to. Images.
So the front of the home is going to be dressed up a little bit with cedar beams up in the, in the front gables, French porch railings with the cedar post and front porch, again, all cedar. Go ahead and scroll. There you go. It's, it's built to fit exactly on this lot. Not a lot of side windows. And then the back of the house will have a drive, a garage from the alley access. Yep. And then with the walkout deck there, I would like to also add on a, you know, a covered deck or a covered patio, whichever, whichever fits, so that there's an outdoor living space as well.
What's, what's your? I can believe it's 15, 16.
Where are the bedrooms?
What was the?
When was upstairs?
It is a three-bedroom. There's two bedrooms on the main level and one bedroom upstairs and also three full bath.
And you have egress windows out of all the bedrooms?
Say that one more time.
And you have egress windows out of all bedrooms?
The bedrooms will be on the main level. So it will look very much like a ranch house from the street. So the, the egress window, we will have an egress window in the basement, one, possibly two. So I wanted to stud this out so that it could be, possibly have a fourth bedroom, if, if we can work that way. But right now, it's just the two bedrooms on the main floor with no stairs walk up and then another third bedroom upstairs.
But all three bedrooms that are currently being built have egress windows out of those?
Yes, they're, they would be able to, it's, it's right there on the ground level, yes.
Didn't you say there was a third bedroom upstairs?
Yes.
David, can you bring those plans up again and show the floor plant, the floor plant piece of it?
Is this maybe what you're looking at, the window, upstairs window?
Okay.
Yeah. Alderman Lehman, we'll make sure that the plans are, are stamped per code requirements.
Okay. There's no other questions or discussion from the board or no other information from applicant. I would like to, with it being a public hearing, to open the floor for comment by the public. If you are for or against this proposed ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Call the floor open. Nobody's moving in person. Ryan, do we have anybody online?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
See, nobody moved. Floor is closed for public comment. Any other questions or discussion from the board? If not, if we can entertain a motion to pass the proposed ordinance by reading it first time by Todd only, please?
An ordinance amending chapter 400 of the municipal code, the comprehensive zoning regulations of Kearney, Missouri, rezoning approximately 1.8 acres to RP1 Low Density Residential Plan District with the concept plan as requested by KED Management.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Second reading by Todd only, please?
An ordinance amending chapter 400 of the municipal code, the comprehensive zoning regulations of Kearney, Missouri, rezoning approximately 0.18 acres to RP1 Low Density Residential Plan District with concept plan as requested by KED Management.
Make a motion to approve on second read?
I'll second that. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance passes.
Roll call.
Yes, let's take a call.
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
We have no old business, no new business. We'll go to Alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
I would like to wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving. We have a lot to be thankful for this year, so that is all I have to say. Happy Thanksgiving.
No, not tonight. I don't have anything.
Alderman Lehman?
I don't think so.
Alderman Barker?
I actually, sorry, I actually have two things. One, a question, and one, a comment, and my question is actually to David. On these new sidewalks that are running along Nation Road, who is responsible for snow cleaning on those sidewalks? I can't hear you, David.
I thought I was, I looked down, I saw I was unmuted. The city will be responsible for people. Out in front of the school, I imagine the school will probably keep that section of sidewalk open.
That may be so. However, we have traditionally let Mother Nature take care of maintenance of sidewalks on 33 Highway and everywhere else. We do not have a snow removal crew for sidewalks, so that is, that is an issue. We certainly will work with the school if there's pedestrians that are using them and we have a lot of snow, but we're relying on the goodwill of those folks who live in the neighborhoods to take care of those sidewalks, which has happened over the many years we've had 33 Highway sidewalk.
My concern is probably more along 33 or along Nation Road where there's no residences. There's a pretty significant portion of sidewalk that is in farmland, so that's my concern, if we've got people using that. But that's, I mean, we can work that out later. Hopefully, we don't get snow in the next month, but.
Alderman Barker, I did just, not to take up your time, but I did ask David, I asked staff David's status of why isn't that thing open yet? So we're just waiting on a MoDOT inspection, and I believe the actual crosswalk signal will be installed this week, so just to verify this. I think people are unofficially using it.
Yes, yes, they are.
But that's what we're waiting on, officially get it open, open.
Okay, perfect.
That is still an active, it is an active project that the contractor controls, so they'll definitely keep it signed as not open until it is released to be officially open. Yet people are still using it, and we don't have anybody out there kicking anybody off the sidewalk.
Perfect. And then I also wanted to commend the city on the website development. It is something that's really important to me, and I think it is the best way for the city to communicate with its residents, and I think that this is going to be something that's going to be very valuable to the city. We've got a website, we've got a website in place, but I think the changes that we're proposing to make are going to make it much more usable and user-friendly, so again, I just want to commend staff for pushing this forward and getting this show on the road.
Thank you. We do have a notice executive session in place tonight, so I do want to, the board to consider a motion to enter executive session of RSMO 610021, subject to one legal actions, two, real estate, and three, hiring, disciplining or putting of a particular employee by a public government body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded.
I make a motion to go into executive session, closed session.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? We'll enter executive session at 7:25. Thank you. Have a good night, sir.
Good job, Donnie.
Good job, babe.